Our council meeting will begin here in just a second. I do want to remind those of you who just have a burning desire to know more about the fireworks ordinance, no pun intended. And we'll have a workshop immediately following this meeting dealing with fireworks because we're looking at revising the current ordinance, so you may be interested in that. That being said, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
So move.
By Mr. Lawrence is here, second. By Mr. Barrett. Any discussion? All in favor? It's a five oh vote. All right, if the clerk would read the revisions, please.
To the consent agenda, we will be adding item 5V, resolution ratifying entry into industrial waste and disposal service agreement with Coastal Recyclers Landfill LLC in connection with Hurricane Ida debris removal. We will be adding item 5W, resolution ratifying entry into the federal emergency management agency's addendum to the contract with Crowder Gulf LLC in connection with the Hurricane Ida debris removal. We will be adding item 5X, resolution ratifying entry into agreement for professional project management with Ander Corp LLC in connection with Hurricane Ida sand removal. We will be adding item 5Y, resolution ratifying entry into an agreement with SGK Landscapes Incorporated for emergency sand removal in connection with Hurricane Ida sand removal. And to the routine agenda, we are substituting the docket of claims.
Remove the agenda as amended. All right, there's a motion to approve the agenda as amended by Mr. Lawrence is here, second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Barrett. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. That brings us to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief, and then I think we'll ask Frank to come up and talk a little bit about the insurance information that's provided. But I do want to give you an update on a couple of things. Some of the addendums today dealing with the removal in an emergency mode, especially where we are with regard to next week in cruising. We've been challenged by not only Ida, Nicholas, some of these other wind events that have put the highway in sort of a disrepair, in conjunction with MDOT, as well as our other partners with Coastal Mississippi. We'll be meeting with Coastal Mississippi, as well as the board of supervisors, to really address this in detail. What needs to be done to keep at least Highway 90 and position it for future maintenance and repair? We've been short in all kinds of ways, especially with COVID. But you know, the knock is that, you know, the look and feel is not what it needs to be. And this support of these issues will position us to be right there in top-notch and clean, you know, the entries and just the use of these arteries to where we have a top-notch, a well-kept destination. So I ask you for your support there. Along the same lines, we did Clean Sweep. We're in the middle of Clean Sweep, and that's cleaning up the debris. I think Jerry's crew identified 750 or over 750 spots that we need to remove piles of debris in construction and that sort of thing. And Mike has a little update on where we are with Operation Clean Sweep.
We're in day two. On day one, they picked up eight large, very large truckloads of debris, working in East Biloxi and in Eagle Point. They're moving now from Eagle Point north into Woolmarket, and they're moving west from the far reaches of Point Cadet, now moving in past Main Street. And it's, as I used to say in my former business, it's a target-rich environment. Every street they go down, there's piles of stuff. We simply, we heard from the council week after week, and just finally decided we had to do something. We knew that Pelican was not going to catch up without some help. So this is a five-day push, and we'll continue to move west here, south of the bay, and north, and into Woolmarket, north of the bay. I have one other tidbit to share with you. As of today, we have just received $3.4 million in FEMA reimbursable funds for the debris removal for Hurricane Zeta. You'll recall that we've been long waiting for that big check, and we will use that to pay down the borrowing note that we have with the People's Bank. That money's in the bank.
And that represents about, all but about 12.5%. That was our tab as far as the expected expense for debris removal. So that puts us in pretty good shape. That's that credit line that we borrowed and paying it down. So this is the pay-it-down mode. Okay. And I think that concludes my report. Concludes your report, too?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bordeaux to...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Frank?
Since we last met, OneBeacon has fulfilled everything that we requested, with the exception of general liability coverage on a single vessel. That's a fire vessel based on state law. Mr. Abad and I spoke about it. I believe that any time that vessel's going to be used, it's going to be in the course and scope of their duty, and they would have immunity from a liability standpoint. We still have whole coverage on that vessel. So I feel very comfortable. Our fear was more the law enforcement vessels, that we may have some liability issues. Those are covered, and so I would recommend option two for savings of $37,000 over our previous carrier, Brit. We've been with Brit for a very long time. OneBeacon has approved the same third-party administrator to handle the claim, same actuary, and all of our legal staff. And so I would make the recommendation to move to option two.
Might we see that resolution perhaps on the next council agenda? We're ready to move forward with that, just get it taken care of. Anything else? Any questions, Mr. Lawrence? You look like...
Final numbers?
Yes, sir. Any other questions, Mr. Bordeaux? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Mayor? Anything else, Mr. Mayor? All right, thank you, sir. We don't have any departmental reports that I'm aware of. That brings us to the council reports. I'll start with Mr. Guines in Ward Two.
Oh, yes, thank you. First of all, I want to thank the administration. We've seen a lot of those trucks in the area today, and a lot of the people were very excited, very happy just to see some dump trucks in there. They picked up a lot of stuff in the community and very, very appreciative, as I got text messages and emails and pictures of the trucks in the area. So thank you, guys, for that. I had the opportunity to go to the MML meeting last week, and I brought back a package for the mayor and talked a little bit about debt collection and ways that we can collect debts that are owed to us. I passed that along to the mayor, so he can check it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guines. Ms. Newman, anything in Ward Three? All right. Mr. Lawrence in Ward One.
Yeah, one question back to the mayor. On the 10 million we borrowed, we got 3.4...
But we didn't borrow, we borrowed about six...
Well, we had a line of 10 million.
Right.
How much of the 10 million did we actually put in action?
Six, I think. Six of the bar. About 6 million.
Between 5.5 and 6 million is the amount that we took out, that we drew, and now we're putting basically four back in. So that means that we're still out about 1.5 million. And we've still got some very big claims that haven't been paid yet.
But I mean, it's pretty good to think of reverses.
Debris monitoring.
It took a while to do it, but...
Yeah. Yeah, it worked out well as far as the interest rates that were being, that were paid. So the only thing that really we'll have to come up with is a little bit of the interest it costs us while the money's out borrowed, and then as well as our 12.5%. So that's, you know, what we can expect of the, you know, $7 or $8 million worth of cleanup that we had to do. So it's well within the scope, and I think we have a good handle on how we're going to proceed with, as the claims come in and we pay those, that note down.
I thank you. Y'all did a good job of putting everybody together, too, to help clean up the beach and the debris. Everybody's working together like that. It makes it a lot easier. Everybody puts up their share. That's a good thing.
That's right. You know, as I mentioned, we'd reached out and had a couple of meetings with the governor and some MDOT folks before. In July, there was a couple of blows that put a lot of sand on the beach, and that's the conversations that started happening in regard to, we need some resources to put on. This is, you know, our backyard, and to act like a destination, you have to look like a destination, and that's what we're trying to do. So sort of a natural course, we went to visit the governor. I was asking for a million and a half about two or three Tuesdays ago, last meeting I missed, but I was up there. And, you know, the takeaway, Representative Kevin Felscher was there with me, but the bottom line is, he realizes image matters, and that's some of the things that have not really been taken into account as far as budget, you know, emergency cleanups and stuff like that. They don't really pay attention. But the project that we've defined has engaged professional management, as well as the grounds care and landscaping and ongoing maintenance in the equation. So I feel real good about what we'll accomplish together with the county and Coastal Mississippi. They realize that this is part of the job. This is good advertisement to have a clean place.
Yeah, well, you have $25 million impact from cruising.
Yeah.
Huge.
Yeah.
You know, that's a good thing. One other thing, I need to ask the fire chief. On Oaklawn, I told you about the limbs that were hanging low. Did you check out Oaklawn to see if you could trim those limbs out running too low on the street?
Yes, sir. They checked out the very same day, and I think they've already gotten dollars.
And last and not least, Mayor, everybody's been waiting to hear. They said, we all know you've been working hard on setting up some type of raises for everybody in the city. Could you kind of update where you are with some of that?
Yeah, we're, you know, with you, council president, we'd be pondering some things on what needs to be done. We realize that there's a, you know, a number that's been thrown out as far as inflation, and we need to take all of these things into consideration. We've had a decent position. We're coming back with a couple of solutions that even though it may take millions of dollars, but there's some return on investment, both in productivity, as well as just logical ways to take care of our employees. I can't give you any real numbers, but you know, shortly, 10, 15 days, maybe first or second meeting, we'll have a solid proposal with what we're asking of our employees. They make us money, they keep us alive, we do the job that we need to for the cities. So that's on the radar. Again, we're fine-tuning the compensation in long-term, one, two, and three years. Some of the moves we made, since, you know, the whole thing's, you know, the possible savings of 6, 7, 800,000, and it comes out of our pocket, that's all part of the compensation, what it costs for us to maintain. So I think those are giving us a pretty good feel and good position about whatever number we bring up. That's an offset, that if we don't, you know, if we don't make those moves, the package, you know, is not right. But we're considering all of those options, and we'll come back with a pretty solid proposal within a couple of weeks.
Yeah, that's why I'm glad you made the little speech about that, because everybody's been interested and waiting to see what's going to happen.
Yeah.
And I said, it's going to happen, it's just let us work it out.
Yeah.
Get the right number we need to put on the table.
That's it. I think all along, you know, when we talked about the October 1 budget, you know, long haul, the target date to turn the key on the package would be January 1. But we need to do a lot of things to get it set up, but that was, you know, from day one, I think, was pitched. That gives us time to know what happened at the end of, you know, in October 1. We'll know where we are, whether we're going to fund balance and caches that are available, and then long-term looks at where we are. And so we put, you know, a package that is fair to everyone.
Thank you. Is that it, Mr. Lawrence?
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Demming in Ward Four.
I may have missed this because I walked in late. Unfortunately, I was taking a shower that I can't be built for water for. Speaking of water, do we have any statistics, and this is what I may have missed, about how much rainfall we've incurred? You know, we have a lot of, I mean, I've seen some numbers about the average of 60 inches, and we're already over like 120 inches at this point, or something like that. And our systems were not designed to handle this much water, especially when they were built. And even I think if we built them 10 years ago or five years ago, they wouldn't have been designed to carry this much water.
Yeah. It's over 100 inches. Three weeks ago, it was 92.
Right.
And, you know, we've had that Nicholas event, which had to be put seven or eight inches at least in our back door.
One of the unintended consequences of all this rain, we have lost two big manholes where the whole manhole structure caved in. One, right, that we, I probably talked about last meeting, on Edgewater Estates, that turned into Fairview. That's been repaired now. Then, two days ago, one, another one blew up. When I use the term blew up, I'm playing that, but basically caved in on Bouvoir Road, right by the Coliseum. And that's a temporary fix in place. We're trying to get the precast concrete box to get in there and make a permanent repair. And in the meantime, Dixie's Parra Place keeps getting pushed back as we keep having these emergencies. What happens, of course, in these rainstorms is, particularly in the older sections of town, where there's older infrastructure in place, you have a lot of infiltration into the system. You see that at the sewage plant, where the volume of sewage goes up exponentially during a rain, because it's got all the...
Not really, the sewer, just the flow of it.
Flow of the plant, which includes all that infiltration. That infiltration also has to make its way through various lift stations and manholes and so forth. And some of them, you know, because of the volume of water they're carrying, it's causing damage in some of our underground structures. So it's been a crazy week.
I think another consequence that we're seeing, and I'm going to give you some locations to look at, with the outdated infrastructure, you know, it has cracks and holes. With this amount of added flow, we're also getting washouts. You know, the water that's creeping out of the pipe is also causing subsidence of the land or material that's in there. And so we're getting sinkholes popping up all over the place.
Along, I didn't mean to jump in front of you, but you know, we submitted $25 million worth of water, sewer, storm drain kind of issues in this hopeful 1.9 billion that's going to the state. We were shovel-ready in many cases. It's what, 25 million, wasn't it, total?
Twenty-nine.
And most of it is pointed towards, you know, the east. Infrastructure has been rebuilt, you know, from deep sewer. So the attack is on what, in the left, you know, the remaining parts of the city, which will, you know, influence...
The West Biloxi.
Yeah.
Yeah, the areas hit hard, us, wards three, four, and five. That's where our oldest infrastructure is now. And in some cases, that infrastructure is struggling at this, with these unprecedented amounts of rainwater.
Do we have a, with regard to that funding, do we have a proposed plan that we can roll out and show people that there is something coming that we have hope?
Yeah, we can provide those plans in general terms that, you know...
Right, we're in the reaction mode right now, but as you recall, we told the council a while back that we're developing a West Biloxi master plan, and that's due to us, I think, in another 30 days. And it will list a whole series of projects that have been, will have been structured, scoped. We have a project scope and an estimated cost, and I think we can put together a bond package or something.
Well...
We haven't gotten to the financing angle.
Right, so as long as we have something that we can show that we're going to roll out this plan, this master plan, there is an actual plan. And I think a lot of people ask me about it, because they deal with this, and they've heard the excuses, and all the rain, and years in funding, people are ready to see a plan in West Biloxi, so.
We tried, as we get, we're getting a dozen calls a day for people that are worried about, you know, flooding and so forth. And what we try and do, we send an inspector out in each case to look and see, is the problem something we can fix today, or is it a long-term problem? Is it a personal, is it on private property, or is it something that the city streets are causing and so forth? And then we try, and if it's something we can do right away, we do. If it's something like Laurin Falls, for example, is flooding because of some work that we did a year ago that made the water situation on Campbell Drive better, but made it worse than Laurin Falls. So we're going to try and get to, after these storms are over, we're going to try and get to some of those problems and get them fixed. But this is just unprecedented, the amount of water that we're getting.
All right, it's historical. I had some things for Jerry when he returned, so he'll come back to me.
Okay. Mr. Barrett in Ward Seven.
Just a couple things. Thanks for the pickups bright and early yesterday. They were in Eagle Point, and driving through there today, I think everything's gone as far as storm debris. And so everyone, I'm sure, is going to be appreciative of that. Second, thanks for getting tally out to get the silt fence down from the park. Now, all we have to do is get that mowed around there, and those trees cut that had grown into the fence and will be in good shape. And then I would also like to, it's on the agenda, on the consent agenda, I'd like to recognize Casey, for his help on Eagle Point Park. We have 125,000 of tidlins coming down. This is the third time, for a total of, I think, $625,000 going towards that park. So that's a, and then with what we've put into it, very appreciative of his support to help make that happen. And that's all I have.
Thank you. And I have my report. That being the case, that brings us to the public agenda and citizens' comments. We'll allot each speaker up to three minutes and set aside up to 45 minutes of this council meeting. If you're going to address the council when you're recognized, please come up to the table. You can sit beside the mayor, or if the mayor leaves, you can actually sit in his chair.
Asked me to leave, isn't it?
Not yet, we hadn't. Please state your name clearly so that the clerk records your name accurately. So at this time, if there's anybody on my left, your right, that would like to address the council, my left, your right. Nobody, okay? Anybody on my right, your left, wish to address the council? Excuse me. Mr. Ramsey. Good afternoon.
My name's Gilbert Ramsey. I'm a military veterans outreach specialist, innovation outreach specialist. I'm representing business ID 723588, which is a veteran bottled water company. I'm going to Washington, October 26th to the 28th, for innovation comprehensive ideas to introduce new manufacturing opportunities. I'm using this as a platform to introduce more innovative ideas. What we've done is, we've had this bottle and everything, we're waiting on shrink wrap right now, and we have contracts for the BXs, the commissaries, and all Walmarts. And we're coming out of Canton, Mississippi, and we utilize this in our Tijon well location. And so what I'm doing here to offer y'all, my CEO, president, he's retired Army Ranger, Mr. Fred Boykin, offering an opportunity to come before y'all to initiate a sponsorship opportunity with us, meaning this program is located through Hancock Distribution sponsorship organization. And so what we've done is, I'm coming for this opportunity for y'all to be recognized, to envision this proposition with y'all. And Mr. Fred Boykin has given me this permission to initiate it with this outreach to... ...have this comprehensive plan to come forth with a manufacturing opportunity with innovative ideas as well. I have another idea I'm going forth with, to introduce manufacturing opportunity to retain the students and hire the heroes and spouses of the United States Chamber. Senator Roger Wicker initiative. So they've all recognized me for this opportunity, ladies and gentlemen. I'm coming here to show y'all what's happening. Bottled water, and then another innovative idea, to introduce within the hub, within Stennis, Ingalls, and all bases, and all universities, consortium universities with research capabilities, SBIR, SCTR research grant opportunities. So they've all offered me this opportunity. So I'm here to help y'all, to demonstrate appropriately, and come to me, recognize what I'm doing for us. I have this for y'all. Thank you very much for your time and your patience. You have a blessed day and be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. Anybody else on my right, your left? Anybody in the back? Does anybody, last call? Anybody wish to address the council? All right, that concludes citizens' comments. We'll now move to the policy agenda. If the clerk would read the first item, it's a first reading, item A, please.
Ordinance amending Chapter Two, Municipal Facilities, Article 14, Section 2-14-15 of the Code of Ordinances.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Barrett. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Guines, thank you. Since this is a first reading, it's all the action that's necessary. That brings us to the second reading of an ordinance. If the clerk would read item B, please.
Ordinance to amend the zoning district map for the amendment of the PDTND Plan Development, Traditional Neighborhood Development Master Plan for property currently identified as 2330 Atkinson Road.
That motion was made by Ms. Newman and the second by Mr. Guines. Ms. Newman, comments?
Jerry?
What has happened with the project is that after the public hearing, where originally Dr. Bertucci was proposing 111 single-family lots, he went back and listened to the neighbors that lived next door, and he decided that he wanted to revise the design. So he's reduced that 111 lots down to 14. There'll be larger lots, some of them almost an acre in size. They'll have very nice houses. It'll be more like a gated community in a sense.
Did you say 14?
14. There's 13 that houses will be built on, but then that leaves the remainder of the property as a remnant lot, so that's why it says 14. This is a good project, it's good for the neighbors. We had some neighbors that came and asked questions about it at the public hearing before the planning commission. Now, it was suggested at the planning commission that maybe they should take that entrance coming in off Bonneville and turning that into a walk-through gate only. But since then, I've talked with the fire chief and the assistant chief, and they need that access over there as a Knox Box entrance for emergency purposes. And Jim Holt is here, representing Dr. Bertucci, in case you have any specific questions about the project.
That's the only change, though, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
Jerry, that's 14 big lots, right? How much land is left over after that?
How much land is left over after the...
After the 14 acres or whatever they run?
Well, there'd be none left over after the 14, because the 14th lot includes everything that's left after the 13 are deducted from it. So if you look at the picture in your packet, there's actually a design in there that shows the 13 lots that are being created, and it's the ones that are right next to Sailor, the ones that actually abut it. It shows up, the 14th lot shows up as future phase, and it includes everything that is left, other than the property that are, the houses are going to be built on.
And what's the plan for that?
Well, he's got several things that he's discussing now, you know, that maybe it would be mixed use, maybe it would be part commercial and part residential, maybe commercial on the bottom floor and residential above. He really hasn't finalized that next phase yet. This is the only one that he's certain about. And one thing I would mention, too, is that one of these 13 lots is the house that he already lives in. already lives in.
So the other thing, we don't really know what they're going to do with the rest of the land?
Not at this point, no, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Guines, comments? Mr. Demming, anything? Mr. Barrett, anything? I have nothing. That being the case, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the ordinance as presented? Thank you.
It's approved on a 6-0 vote.
That brings us to the second reading of item C, which is an ordinance as well. If the clerk would read that, please.
Ordinance to amend selected sections of the land development ordinance to remove two-family and three-to-four-family dwellings as specific uses within the RS5 zoning district classification to allow the newly proposed used salvage yard as a conditional use exclusively within the RB, Regional Business, and I, Industry, Industrial Zonings.
Thank you. I made the motion. It was seconded by Mr. Guines. Mr. Creel, if you would, just explain the reason why we're doing this.
There are two parts to this change, and it's essentially a housekeeping item. RS5 zoning, in the first item that we're discussing, is a single-family zone district, and there was a typo in the chart, the tables that are in the book, that showed that two-family and multifamily dwellings were allowed in RS5. And that's not correct. So what we're doing is removing those as uses in the RS5 district. So it's just a correction of the table. On the second item, salvage yard, salvage yards originally called junkyards, but the terminology has changed, and they've only been allowed in, as a conditional use, in industrial zoned property. But we've had some people approach us about, that have RB zoned property, and asked if we would consider allowing it as a conditional use. So what we're proposing is that it be added as a conditional use in the RB zoning. And of course, the conditions would be that it could not be located right next to the road, that if it were a wooded area and the salvage yard was located off of the main road where it couldn't be seen, then it would be allowed as a conditional use. So any application we receive for that would go to the planning commission for a public hearing, and then come to the council for consideration before it would be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Creel. I have no questions. Mr. Guines, no questions? Anybody have any questions, any discussion? All in favor of the ordinance as presented? Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
The motion.
By Mr. Lawrence? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Barrett, I believe. Mr. Lawrence, any particular items?
No, it's nice to see a lot of this tidlins money coming to us. That's a good thing for the city of Biloxi. I know we'd like to have more, but at least we're getting there. It's pretty not pretty good, so that's going to help the city.
We didn't get everything we asked for, but we didn't do bad.
Say again?
So we didn't get everything we asked for. But we'll be able to get these projects done. And I'm talking about Coon Street Boat Ramp, Eagle Point Park, and Hiller Park Boat Ramp, all of which they shorted us on what we asked for. But I think we're going to be able to, through a combination of means, either reduce the scope of the projects, or add some city money to the kitty, and still be able to do all those projects.
Well, the Causeway is $200,000. There's going to be a floating dock?
That's the one that, that's the only one of the four that we got what we asked for. And that's for floating dock system to put at the Causeway Park, so we could bring boats
This, G?
G?
Is this a new company we have doing the audit, or Federal Service Accounting and Audit? Is this a new company, or is this the same one?
Well, as you know, we use an accounting firm to do our audit each year, and we typically, after every three or four years, we tend to switch, put it back out to bid. We did that, and we got four bids. We formed a selection committee. We made a recommendation to the mayor on which of the companies to give our business to next, and that's the result, that resolution is the result.
So this is the first time they've done it for the city? This is the first time?
Yeah. That's it for me.
All right, Mr. Barrett? Mr. Guines, anything?
None.
Ms. Newman, anything?
Hey, counsel.
Mr. Demming? I should slow down a little. We could set a record here, going through this.
Franny Day.
On the audit contract, Alexander Van Leeuwen, Sloan, Levens, and Farr, I mean, they're reputable, they've been around for a number of years, and I'm just looking at and reading through that, they're going to deliver the annual financial report March 1st.
That's what we said.
I mean, that's what we're.
Department we set, it hasn't been met in the past.
I'm hoping, yeah, okay, keep your fingers crossed on that. I'm sure they'll do a good job. I'm sure they'll have it to us. Also, on item P, we're rescinding the Orokeef Management Agreement that we approved the previous week, and really, I think the only thing that's changing is who's going to be responsible for the fire suppression system. Is that pretty much it?
We've been in a round, going round and round and round with the museum and the fire alarm system, and we find that it could be a whole lot cleaner to just put a little more money in their management agreement and let them deal with it, because it's just burning a lot of our time managing their fire alarm system.
Gotcha, okay. Makes sense to me. I don't have any other questions.
I actually do have a couple.
Mr. Demming, question?
On D, the grant for the Causeway Park, it doesn't require a match. What are we using those funds for?
D is in Delta.
Delta, correct.
No match required.
That's right. So what are we using the 200K for? Are we going to restore piers? Is that, what's the money intended for?
It was intended for a floating dock system to be put at the, behind the bait shop, where we would extend this, and one small little dock out, and other boats could come pulling, and there's really no place for boats to dock now. And they can't dock out on the, underneath the bridge, because it's, the waves from all the passing boats do too much damage to the boats. So there's always been a need. There's a little area, little, if you will, kind of a round, deep area right back behind the, call it the bait shop area, that where you could pull boats in, but just couldn't get many boats in there.
Right, and I think that's a benefit to the area, but we still have to address the damaged piers.
Yeah, if, you know, what we're trying to do is recover from some previous storm information, them images, is what we're trying to do from some other financing sources to fix, in long-term, those things. It's not, you know, separate items, but it's still on our radar, to repair what was damaged as far as the things that are sitting sideways or unrepaired, unusable.
Right, okay.
We're in the cycle right now where it's almost time to submit new projects. About the time we get the money, the cycle starts over again. So one of the projects that we will ask is for money to repair the existing docks that are, were damaged.
That's all I have for that item. Chief, I know we entered this almost every year, right, this memorandum of understanding with the Center for Nonviolence? Can you just refresh my memory? I'm sorry?
Stacy Riley is here. Now, this is different than what we mean.
Okay.
Stacy Riley is, I guess, the executive director?
Yes.
Thank you for that organization, Ms. Riley.
Yes, we have, of course, a longstanding relationship with the city, the police department, and fire department, and courts. And what we have been working with, the different projects with this, is to put together a strategic planning process to work together to build a program called a Family Justice Center. And a Family Justice Center is basically a one-stop shop for victims of violent crime. So we would have a facility, and we're not coming asking for money at this point in time, we just want to see what we can do to figure out what our project would look like, and for, you know, develop an MOU for all of our partners to work with. This would be for Gulfport, Harrison County, and Biloxi, as well as our agency, to put together a project to be able to have a facility where a victim of domestic violence, sexual assault, trafficking, or family members of homicide victim can walk in and receive services at, well, it's a one-stop shop. So we would have law enforcement personnel in there, we would have court personnel located in the facility, as well as our victim advocates and our legal clinic that provides civil legal services. This would be able to address the barriers that victims deal with whenever they reach to seek services, from the point whenever the victimization occurs, to the point they receive, they look for any type of resolution to the process. So we're looking at being able to better provide services as a collaborative effort for victims of violent crime. And that's what this whole MOU is for, is us to be able to come to the table and come up with a strategic planning process on how we would make this work within Harrison County.
Good, thank you. I'm glad you're here to let us know what the difference was, and I appreciate it. Good luck to putting that program together, and I look forward to hearing more about it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riley.
Mr. Mayor, on all the additions, they all with Coast Recycles, Crowder Golf, all of the groups related to IDA cleanup for debris removal and sand removal, can you tell me about the rollout, when they're going to?
As you recall, I've had some conversations, I'm not sure whether I said this, I know I said this again, but we were asking for the governor's support, MDOT's support, and doing some cleanup that would actually impact very shortly, the visitation we're going to have. Again, most of the business, as far as the 4.2 million visitors a year are in Biloxi, most of them use Highway 90. That's our, you know, artery that a lot of the business comes down. I initially asked the governor before a July event at Centennial about, you know, there was a wind event that put sand everywhere. At the time, was pushing sand to the side, getting it off the highway, but stacking it up, and time and time again, you can see the remnants of what they did in July, the remnants of what they did even from Zeta. This concept is to figure out how we can do an immediate, short-term fix to sand removal, grading of the look and feel of the highway. We engaged a plan with, that involved Royal Incorporated from a program management situation, Christian Prius, who's a landscape designer from, his Fairhope business, Fairhope, Alabama, which is a top-notch, you know, it's a situation where we'd like to have a replication of those pruning, those things that need to be taken care of. Bottom line, we formed an opportunity with both the county and the state MDOT, because we're cooperating with MDOT in one of these contracts to actually, we're loading the sand, they're taking it away, handling traffic control, but also the funding of this will come from not only the city, which we're approving today, but also the county, as well as Coastal Mississippi, because it's all part of that image that we need to take care of. The governor had mentioned in my meetings with him that image is important, and he would provide what he could legally to make this happen in the timeframe we're talking about. You know, they're going to be going, if this is approved, they'll be going from dawn to dusk to get this accomplished, you know, before cruising the coast. It's similar to what we said with Clean Sweep in getting the debris. That's the same kind of emergency attack on this problem we have, and it's all to do with image, and all to do with, you know, keeping up a destination top-notch appearance.
Right, and that's why I was asking, the kickoff for cruising the coast, I think, is this weekend.
Third, yeah.
Right, um, do we have any numbers for participation rates with all the rain and the weather?
Oh, yeah, I think talking with Woody today, he came by, they had 8,000 pre-registered, they're expecting 9,000 registered. You can kick that up, you know, another thousand or so while people are just dropping in.
Right.
So it's going to be a big event, especially after the, you know, the 18 months we've experienced, you know, was COVID. So it's going to be way up there as far as attendance. Of course, Wednesday is our big day.
I apologize if you mentioned that before I walked in.
Well, I don't, anyway, I'm happy to talk about it again, because
Thank you.
It's a big, it's a big thing that we're going to do together.
Thank you. That is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. All right, there aren't any other items to be discussed. Call for the question on the consent agenda, all in favor. It's approved on a 6-0 vote. Are there any exceptions? Mr. Barrett? None from me. Mr. Demming, any exceptions? Mr. Lawrence, none. Ms. Newman, any? Mr. Guines, okay, terrific, thank you. There are no code enforcement hearings, which is rare. Good job, Mr. Creel. And that brings us to the routine agenda. I'll entertain a motion by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Mr. Guines. Mr. Lawrence, questions?
So the 1.338 million that I mentioned in our last council meeting is in step three of five. It's been there about four days. It should move into the next step by the end of the week, and then typically takes 10 to 15 business days to get to the city, so good stuff coming.
Keep it coming, that's good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the routine agenda? There being none, all in favor of the agenda as presented? The 6-0 vote, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Demming. All in favor? That's a 6-0 vote, thank you. At this time, we'll go ahead and open the workshop. I'll need a motion to approve the.
Thank you, pardon.
Okay, go ahead. How many?
I would need a couple of minutes, or?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Move.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence, is there a second? Second by Mr. Barrett. All in favor? It's approved on a 5-0 vote. Note, Mr. Guines is out of the room. Lawrence and Barrett. Okey-dokey, any reports, Mr. Mayor?
No report.
No departmental reports, any council reports? Ms. Newman? Mr. Lawrence?
None.
Mr. Demming? Mr. Barrett? There are none?
I didn't get a chance to address the other.
Sure, go ahead.
Not part of the fire ordinance issue, but if you would just check, there's a, coming out of the corner of Pops Ferry and Pass Road, where there's a new liquor store that was like the pet shop and McAllisters, that little shopping center across from the gas station and Smoothie King, are you familiar, right there, corner of Pops Ferry Pass Road? If you're coming out of that entrance or exit to, right there on the corner where the pet shop is and the new liquor department, liquor store, there's a huge tree, bush thing that's grown way over like the sidewalk, and you cannot, it's a death trap trying to turn left or right out of that thing.
Okay, we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. That concludes the reports. We'll now come to citizens' comments. Is there anybody on my left, your right, that would like to address the council? Anybody on my right, your left?
Thank you, Jerry.
There being none, we'll move on to the policy agenda. And the purpose of this workshop is really, or special meeting, is to amend, discuss And the purpose of this workshop is really, our special meeting is to amend, discuss the amendments to the Biloxi Code of Ordinances, specifically Sections 13-1-12 fireworks and 23-4-3 D8M, which sections address seasonal fireworks sales. Mr. Creel, you're already in position. If you'd give us an overview and tell us what we're looking at.
After, after the last meeting, one of the things that I noticed was that there was a lot of confusion about what we were discussing. I think a lot of that confusion had to do with the fact that we were discussing the sale and the usage of fireworks in the same conversation. So what we did is went back and, we think they need to be separate, they need to be two separate discussions, you know? And the two big questions are, are we going to allow fireworks to be sold in the city of Biloxi? And then the second topic is, are we going to allow them to be ignited in the city of Biloxi? And what we did is took that ordinance that was on the table with the proposed changes and broke it down into a simple list. The first page and part of the second page has to do with what now exists and what is proposed for the sale of fireworks. And then the second section, in the middle of the second page, has to do with the igniting of fireworks. And I think that this is probably easier to understand what is proposed. There are some questions that were asked that I think we'll need to add today. Number one would be under, under sales, where we talk about, are we going to allow fireworks to be sold? If so, when can they be sold? And it shows the dates that are in there for the Fourth of July and the dates that are in there for the New Year's holidays. But the question was about, what about TET? Are we going to allow a sales period for fireworks to be sold for TET? Because that date changes from time to time. Sometimes it's in February, sometimes it's in January, this year it's in February. So that's a question that we probably need to address. On the second page, under the igniting of fireworks, under where fireworks are not allowed to be ignited, we would, we think that the council needs to consider, in the third bullet point, where it says toward any person, animal, vehicle, nor from a motor vehicle, we think that structure needs to be added in that sentence so that no one is pointing or shooting fireworks at a structure in the city. And originally, in the next bullet point, it said within 1,000 feet of a church school while in session. We actually changed that to 500, the recommendation to 500. And the reason we did that is because of the baseball stadium. If we stuck with 1,000 feet, we'd not be allowed to shoot fireworks at the baseball stadium because of Nativity Church, because it's less than 1,000 feet from there. And then the big question, also, under the last bullet point, that 300 feet from any railroad depot, according to the Mississippi statute, if you check that Mississippi statute, it's actually 300 yards, not 300 feet. So we would, we would correct that, you know, revised version. And I think the big question from both the Fire Department and the Police Department is, are we going to allow them in any residential zone? And I'll let the chiefs get up and talk to that subject. But this is just a simplified version of what is in the proposed ordinance, separating the two topics so that you can look at each one.
Well done, well done, Jerry. I don't know if either chief has a comment at this point. Or you may be available for questions, maybe that might be a better way to do it, unless you had comments, whatever you prefer, we've got a little time.
Well, the question of whether or not they should be sold is not a big question to me. If, they're going to go, they're going to go get them somewhere. They're going to use fireworks in the city of Biloxi. And I don't have enough manpower to stop them on a long-term basis. We can do it for a day, but longer than that, it's very difficult. There's so many calls for fireworks being ignited that it's just impossible for us to enforce it all the way. So the selling of them in Biloxi is neither there, here nor there for me. I mean, they're going to go get them somewhere. That's the only comment I have. I'll answer any questions as this goes on that you may have.
Okay, Chief Geiser, any comments?
From a, from a Fire Department standpoint, we're going to back up PD on that, they're going to do it anyway. We respond to it year in, year out on those dates. I understand where they're coming from. I mean, if we went by our NFPA standards, it would say no sales, no igniting, nothing in the city, but we know that's not a possible thing, so we're, we're okay with it.
I know when this first resolution first came up, I think it was December of last year, and I know some of us were out of town, and we tabled it, and then I think it came up a little later, and we tabled it again. But I'd certainly like to hear if we have any retail salespeople associated with fireworks, be interested in your comments if you're here today. It is an opportunity, not that you have to speak, but if you wanted to comment, you're certainly welcome. I'm open for any discussion that we have here or comments. Mr. Demming?
Just for the administration, Jerry, or Mr. Mayor, the link that's set up for this meeting, it says, you know, click to see attached documents or supporting documents, the underlined in the bold is what we're adding, right? The text, the text in this does not reflect the proposed changes. It still shows the 1,000 feet, it still shows the 300 feet, it still shows the 1,000 for churches instead of 500. So are we proposing, this is not what we're proposing to pass. This is, what I'm looking at on the screen, the supporting documents is not
That's correct.
We're proposing to provide another one that reflects what you're proposing here, as opposed to here.
That's great. This is just a breakdown to separate those two topics, which I think that's the way it needs to be done in the ordinance, so that if there's a section in there concerning sales, and there's a section in there concerning the ignition of fireworks. I think that would be easier to understand for anyone that wanted to research it.
Right, I don't disagree that separating is good, I'm just making, but the factual information is, they don't correlate. What's on the computer screen doesn't correlate to what's on the paper.
Now, what's, what's in your ordinance, the one that y'all got on the tape, the one that, that y'all decided not to discuss last time, that's what's actually being considered.
So can we get a copy of that instead of this one that's got the proposed changes that are not the same as these proposed changes?
If this would help a little bit, I mean, we're not, we're not voting on anything today.
No, we're not, but we're having a workshop.
Right, no, I see your point. What you have reflected is not what everybody in the rest of the world is looking at online.
Right.
Well, this is, I've got this all marked up here.
So it may be the thing to do, if this is coming up on an agenda soon, is resolve the differences between the two. So, and it, I don't want to say Scrivener's error, but you've discovered a couple of things in the statute that we need to go ahead and clean up
Yes, sir.
With what's online. And as, and as long as, as those corrections reflect what you've discovered in researching the statute and the changes in terms of distance from churches and everything, that would need to be reflected, and you might want to talk with Pete or about having him make those changes, that would resolve the difference.
Yes, we can, we can, we can clean up the ordinance that came before you in December. We can clean that up with the recommended changes in there and make sure that all of them are underlined before y'all actually vote on it. This was just something that we put together to help better understand what we're talking about here, so.
Right, right, so my concern is just everyone else is looking at this ordinance on here that's, that's attached to the workshop, and then you're talking about 500 feet, and they're looking at it and saying, well, it's underlined and it's being changed to 1,000 feet on here, but he said 500. So it's just confusing, and if it's confusing for me, and I'm holding the documents and looking at the screen, it's going to be confusing for other people, I would assume.
Any, anybody else have any comments or thoughts?
I guess my only question is, on this document that's online, it says 500,000 liability insurance. On this paper, it says 300,000. Is, are you recommending lowering that amount from 500,000 to 300,000?
No, the underlying part says $300,000. It's on the original that was presented to y'all. It's underlined, but it shows 300,000. Which means, which means that it's a recommended change.
I think they linked the wrong ordinance. I think this was a prior recommended ordinance. I don't think this reflects the one that he's referring to.
Okay, all right, so we're looking, okay, that's fine. And as far as TET, that's Chinese New Year, correct?
Yes.
I know Mr. Cooper's here in the audience, is there a big enough demand for fireworks sales then, for us to put that in?
My name is Leonard Cooper Jr., I'm the president of Coast Fireworks. My family has been in the fireworks business for 58 years since Christmas. And I've been selling fireworks personally myself for about 46 years. Used to have a lot of locations, we don't have as many now because of annexations and things like that, but most of your Vietnamese would celebrate the Chinese New Year, know dates when we're open, and they're going to buy them early and they just save them. So basically, as far as being open for Chinese New Year, you wouldn't have to, because they're going to buy them during the dates, like my date in Jackson County, September 15 through January 2nd, June 15 through July 5th. Ain't selling nothing, but them two times a year, and it's controlled by the county, and they have their different rules and regulations, no 10, $1 million liability on each location is what I carry. And then I carry insurance on my fireworks, so someone's to get, you know, hurt by the product, and it goes back to the, to the manufacturer and things like that, but really, they're going to, they're going to buy them, they know, mainly the only thing they really buy is firecrackers anyway that pop. They want rolls like thousands of 500 to 16,000 rolls, they like the red firecrackers, so I'll bring them in early, and then they just, they know to come get them before I close, because after anywhere a second, they wouldn't be able to get them, because legally wouldn't be able to sell them, so I don't. And they're just trying, they'll, they'll get them, they know to come get them after Christmas, you know, that way they'll have, and they put them up, and they're going to shoot them out one day for the Chinese New Year, and they're done. You ain't got to worry about them shooting them past that, because they're just, they're not going to do it.
But from a sales point, you don't think that it would be beneficial? Okay, that's
By extending that season, it wouldn't help a thing.
Okay.
People, local people that buy their fireworks, honestly, and especially New Year's is slower than July, they wait until they get their Christmas stuff done, watch the weather, the weather really, you know, has a lot to do with fireworks sales. You know, come the last two or three days to buy their stuff, that way they don't buy them early, their kids aren't bugging to shoot them, and then they just, that's just the way, that's just the nature of it. It's been getting worse and worse as I've been doing it. Used to, you had some early sales, but it's not like that no more. All your sales come, basically come down to the last four or five days and determine on whether if you have a really bad, rainy New Year's Eve, you're not going to get the turnout, so they're not going to get them because we're closed after that, and things like that. I'll be willing to answer anything you want, I've been, I've been doing this a long
Sure.
I have a question for Mr. Creel. Can you, I'm thinking you can, but can you lawfully purchase fireworks online and have them shipped to your home? I would think you, I would think you can't, but
I would assume you can buy anything online and have it shipped to your home. I don't know that for sure, but
Mr. Cooper, you might, you might, you're in the business.
Used to be able to buy fireworks and have them shipped, and then they went to where you could have stuff shipped that was safe and safe, that means it don't pop, don't leave the ground, stuff like that, which we call like sparklers and the baby stamp pops and falls and stuff, but pretty well since 9/11 with 1.4 explosives, they're not shipping no fireworks for no residential. If you don't have a commercial license and getting it trucked in under 1.4 explosives and paying that fee and that shipping on it, or going and getting it yourself with a license to pick it up, it ain't happening no more.
So folks are, pretty much if you want to shoot fireworks, you got to go to a stand somewhere and purchase those fireworks?
Correct, and since, since 9/11, and things, things have really tightened up and changed, everything has a seven-second safety fuse on it, which is a waterproof green fuse, it's a slow-burning fuse. Then they started taking their rockets and stuff that fly, where the fuses were exposed, and started putting plastic covers over them to keep, and people try to like to cover, and they'd come back with the rockets, they'd hit these rockets home, I can't get them light, I said, well, you got to pull the safety off of them.
Right.
And even on regular firecrackers, now they have a safety fuse at the beginning, then once they go, they're regular, you're regular old-school type fuses.
Any other questions of Mr. Cooper while we have an expert with us? No, I was just going to ask Jerry a couple. Go ahead then, Mr. Lawrence, thank you, Mr. Cooper. Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
One thing, one thing I would point out that's not on the list is that we currently have three operations that sell fireworks, Mr. Cooper's, of course, which is up on Old 67, and then we have the two that have conditional use, one that operates at Cedar Lake and Pops Ferry Road, and one that operates north, on Shriners, north of I-10.
The, the only comment I have, I've heard from some folks, I don't know if you all have, their concerns, particularly from people with pets, with fireworks. I have, I've always had a dog, they go bananas, so I understand that. We're, a lot of military retirees, I hear about post-traumatic stress syndrome in veterans, and just the general nuisance of the noise. And it's probably, I would assume, because I hear loud explosions, I don't know what causes them, I'm hoping it's not a manhole blowing up, but, but you hear those, I don't know how big some of these fireworks are, and I don't know if they're appropriate in residential areas, but they're big boomers. So I've heard from folks, I don't know if you have or not, if you have a pet, you probably experience some of that anxiety. But anyway, that's, that's the only comment that I have, I'm concerned about that. Are there any other comments or questions?
I've had, I've had the same calls, but like Chief Miller said, even if we make it illegal to pop these in neighborhoods, they're still going to do it. And he doesn't have the manpower to go out to every call, especially on New Years and on the Fourth of July. So if we, we make a certain timeframe when they can be discharged, then it makes them, makes it easier for him to do his job outside of that window. And I think although there are concerns there, it also gives those people that have the pets and that have PTSD, they know when this is going to take place, instead of five days leading up and two days after, they know there's this window and this window, and if it's a bad situation, you know, they can make the adjustments. And then it allows the police department to, you know, it allows them, I guess, to be able to enforce it on those other days because it's not as widespread. But I just think that if we make it illegal to pop these in neighborhoods, that it's, there's no way to enforce it, and people are still going to do it. I mean, it's, there's, there's 90% of the people where I live pop them. And so just my neighborhood is going to take the whole police force to enforce that on New Years and on the Fourth of July. It's just not something that I believe we can, that we can regulate on those days.
Any other comments, observations? Jerry, how many locations are available?
Well, it's allowed, it's only allowed in RB zoning, RB, and we have a lot of RB zoning. The, the issue that we get into is that even though the property is zoned RB, what about these distance requirements? Is, is that piece of RB property close to a church, close to a residential neighborhood or whatever? So it's going to be limited by that. Now, I haven't done an analysis of the property we have, we could do that, we could put that together if you wanted to. But I can tell you, there's a lot of RB property at I-10 and Shriners, for example, and then we have RB, essentially the mall is zoned RB, so there are a lot of places that would allow fireworks sales if they meet the distance requirements.
And the other thing in here, conditional use, why do you have that listed as a conditional use?
I'm sorry, Mr. Lawrence.
You have it here, required to have the conditional use. You have it here, required to have the conditional use.
That's right. It's not allowed as a use by right. Just because the property is zoned RB, that means that everybody that asks to sell fireworks would have to come through the planning commission and come to the city council to get approval before we can issue them a permit to do it.
And these feet, where'd you come with these feet, 2,500 feet, 900 yards, whatever you said, 900 feet? Where'd you get those from, these numbers?
I think actually those came from the fire chief, whenever we were discussing this ordinance before the previous fire chief, whenever we were discussing putting some of these things together, that that's what they recommended.
And when it's 2,500 feet, two fire stands can't be within 2,500 feet, is, do we have any of that close, or like you said, it's just gonna fall out of place?
No, sir.
Conditional use in that?
No two are that close together, no.
Yeah, are we gonna limit it, just strictly because they, limit it only if they fall against the church or something like that? But we have an area, you can find them, somebody can open up one, just go through the city and get a permit?
No, we don't have any place where they're allowed as a use by right. Everybody would have to go through the planning commission and the city council to get approval. And if the city council turned them down or, then that's it, they, they would not get a license. And then there are some, there are some issues listed within the regulations, like if, if ownership changes for whatever reason, then the new owner would have to come in and go through the process to get it done. Or if their location changes, then they'd have to come back in and start over.
Which one, you said you said was 300 feet, but it's supposed to be 300 yards? Which one is that?
The railroad stations and warehouses, and that actually comes out of the state law.
And it's supposed to be 900 feet, that?
300 yards instead of 300 feet, yes, sir.
Okay. And have we ever had anything explode anywhere and burn or anything?
Not that I'm aware of.
I'm talking about the selling, whether you actually selling them at. I've never heard of that.
I'm, I'm not aware of anything.
And we don't still not allow them on the beach? I know we stopped it on the point where they shoot the fireworks on Fourth of July, you can't shoot them down there.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, I didn't know, are we gonna continue doing it?
Well, I mean, if, if it is, we probably need to write that into the ordinance to make sure that that's a fireworks-free zone.
Right, I think for the past several years, that's been from the Small Craft Harbor, basically down to Oak Street, right there, that stretch of beach. Be that new walkway.
Okay.
All I can say about that, it, it really killed the crowd as far as watching the fireworks. Something potentially infect them, you know, if you don't get a few thousand people, you used to have probably 25, 30,000 people down there. And now if you don't have the crowds at all to watch the fireworks like they used to be. Of course, they shot them pretty good down on the beach, a lot of fireworks down there. I don't know if we accomplished anything or not, because they still gotta clean them to the beach anyway. That's the hardest a county has to do that, so. So, there's no rules like Chief Miller or Chief Fire Department, Assistant Chief, y'all got anything else you'd like to put in this? Anything else you control a bit better, anything? You know, could you, your responsibility gonna fall back on you and the Fire Department, you know?
We've looked it over pretty well, and, and really, the council was right, we're just trying to find something that we can control, something that we, you know, will at least have the manpower to, to deal with. That, that's all we're trying to do, yeah.
Mr. Barrett?
My only other question is, it says within 150 feet of where fireworks are offered for sale. A lot of these fireworks will travel over 150 feet. So, do we need to make that a further distance from the, especially if you're talking about a tent?
If you, if you go up to, on the first page under sales, it says 2,500 feet from another...
This is sales, though. I'm talking about igniting them.
Oh, igniting, okay.
See, it says that you can ignite them within 150 feet of where fireworks are sold.
Yeah.
If you ignite something...
Yeah, I would think that would be increased.
We need to see what a safe distance is so that you don't have somebody shooting a bottle rocket that goes and blows up a whole, you know?
And we can get with the fire chief and assistant chief about what that safe distance would be.
Okay. That's all, that's all.
Okay. That being the case, maybe we could have this on a future agenda, maybe in early October sometime and go ahead and deal, deal with this and, and get it off our plate and begin implementing whatever is approved. Any other comments, concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I move... By Mr. Lawrence, by Mr. Barrett. Thank you, all in favor? Outstanding, a four oh vote, thank you.